Good afternoon, everyone. It is two o'clock PM on Friday, December twenty second, two thousand and twenty-three. This is a special school board meeting of the Old Public School Board. And we're meeting in the OES Central Office Conference Room, as well as we have a few people joining us on teams. Present in the room are all school board members, Superintendent Seau, Business Manager Jepson, and several, no, two, just our principals. And we have Lori Christiansen, a time wrap with us online. So, good afternoon, welcome. Pledge of allegiance, since I'll stand and say the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I've already welcomed, oh, you come to stay, I've already welcomed the visitors. So we'll move on to item two, items for discussion, and disposable action facilities planning.
Okay. Greg, can, are you handing it off to ICS?
Yes, I will make you a co-host. Sorry, I shouldn't have done that earlier.
That's okay. Can you make Todd a co-host too, please?
I will, yeah.
Todd, I'm gonna bring something up and then I'll let you share.
Okay.
Okay, you guys should both be able to share your screens.
Okay, are you seeing the, the presentation take up the whole screen?
Yeah.
Perfect, okay. All right, so today, what we have on our agenda is we have the results of that community survey number two that has been public until the fifteenth. So we have Todd Rapp here, who will go through the results of those surveys. We plan on shaping and enhancing the plan, kind of based on what we've heard now over the last two, three months. How can we modify the plan and, and see compared to what we've heard to the community? We do, I did want to bring up an RFQ for construction management, and then talk about next steps and any questions. So that, that's what I have for today. Any other expectations that the school board wanted to go through? Okay. So with that, I will hand it over to Todd Rapp. You've met Todd before and, and thank you, Todd, for joining us again and, and giving us an opportunity to, to hear the results, what the community had to say. So if you want to share your screen, I'll let you take over and go from here.
Terrific, Lori. Thank you, and thanks to members of the board for your continued interest in both this project, as well as learning more from your community about their thinking about facilities investments. Can you see the, the PowerPoint on the screen?
Yes.
Okay, terrific. So this is the second online survey that we have completed. We did one in September. You, you recommended that we spend some time communicating with your residents, listening to what they had to say, and then go back and then see, okay, so what's happened to opinion over the course of a couple of months? Just a quick reminder, the, the team you have, in addition, Jody Boyne has, has joined us from Rapp Strategies. Jody's a senior director here, and if, to the extent you move forward and decide to, to conduct a referendum, Jody will be assisting the district with some communications. Now, in terms of methodology, just a reminder that we, this is an online survey. It is, it is conducted on a platform called Survey Monkey, and we reached out to every resident in hopes that they'd all have an interest in providing input to the, to the school district. The results you're about to see are rounded to the nearest percentile. But remember that the sample sizes are small, particularly in the sample we call non-parents. And as a result of that, look in particular for large changes. If you see a two or three percentage point change, you should not think that that's statistically significant at all. We also, for ease of communicating the results, we did not include the "don't know" or "prefer not to respond." So if you see a series of results that doesn't appear to add up to a hundred percent, it's only because that there, that we did not include that in, in the report here. Now, we had two hundred and thirty-six people complete the survey out of two hundred and ninety-two that started the survey. That is an increase of a little bit over fifteen percent from the first survey that we did back in September. Just like the September survey, this is dominated by your parents. In fact, parents make up a higher percentage than the September survey by eighteen percentage points. You also had a number of current and former employees who took the survey, and the sample skews towards those who are under fifty, with two-thirds of those being in that age group. All that's our way of saying is that this is not a representative sample of the voters of your district. Everybody who took this was self-selected. They stepped up and volunteered to take the survey. So what we're really looking at is the, the results of a group that better, best represents community members who are most engaged with the district, and to some extent with the facilities planning process itself. And that's why parents are overrepresented. Now, our goals are very similar to what we saw the last time. Many of the questions had the same wording as in the previous survey, and I'll indicate to you where they did not. But we're largely trying to understand whether or not people believe there's a need for the new investments, and whether they're aware of the facilities planning process you've been undertaking. We're also asking about prioritizing both from the investment side and the tax side. Where is, where's the communities, what the temperature of the community is right now? We also regularly ask about trust in district's decision-making, and I'll walk through the reasons for that again when we hit that slide. But maybe most importantly, we're asking the question, have opinions changed? Because they do over time. And that's a reminder to you that opinions here aren't static, right? They're gonna change over time as we move forward over the next couple of months. And you should never look upon a survey such as this as in any way predictive of what may happen in a referendum, because people's minds will change as they learn more information, and you're gonna see that here. When we asked about the need for new investments, now let me just take a column here under quality of buildings and parents. What you see there are the percentages of people who answered excellent, good, fair, or poor. And then in parentheses, you see the change from the September survey. So for example, under quality of buildings, both parents and non-parents are more likely to say that the quality of buildings are fair or poor than were willing to say that in the previous survey. In fact, in this case, you now have a clear majority who believe the quality of buildings are either fair or poor. But we should not assume from that that they think that that's challenging the education or the ability to provide safe and healthy spaces for students. Because you can see from the right side that opinions have not greatly changed on those. And in the end, a majority of residents of your district, at least those who self-selected themselves for the survey, believe the facilities can still provide high-quality education, and they're providing healthy and safe spaces. On the good side, that means they think you're still doing your job even as the buildings begin to age. But it also means that if, as you're communicating with your residents, our message needs to be pretty straightforward. The buildings are getting older. If you let them get much older, we're going to start to have significant problems. We've managed to take care of these issues today, and our teachers are still doing a great job. But still, school districts need to reinvest in their buildings if they want to continue to use them, and that's why the board's been going through this kind of work. It's just an example of a way that you can talk about this effectively. The awareness of the planning process has increased, and ninety-five percent say they've heard of it. Now, remember, with the self-selected survey, it is likely that more of the people who take the survey will be people who've heard of the planning process, but this is still obviously a great result. And when we find out where they've heard about it from the right side here, what was interesting to me was the word of mouth that was ranked as number two. Nearly two-thirds of people are hearing about it from others. That's a really good sign for a district that wants to go out and really understand what the residents are thinking, whether it results in a successful referendum or not. People are sharing ideas about this, and that's broadening the education. That's, both of these boxes provide data that indicates that, that there's an increase in the effectiveness of the district's work over the last several months. When it comes to investment priorities, there's generally agreement on where you should invest your money, and that it stayed relatively consistent compared to September. The biggest change from September to December was accessible bathrooms became a lower priority, and kitchen renovations moved up to the top group, the highest priorities. Otherwise, it's very consistent among the different groups. And we shouldn't be surprised that there are some changes like that. It would, it mostly would happen in the area of what's the next level down, the tier two, not the, not the, the least important priorities, but kind of that middle level. And that's, I think, what we're seeing there. The good news here is that there's really strong alignment, though, between the needs that have been identified by district leadership and what residents think need to be invested in. And the fact that the, that the results have stayed fairly consistent since September suggests that there's a hardening of opinion that this is where the money should be spent. Now, we did change this question somewhat significantly, and this is, was really the question of how much should we do right now? When we asked the question of September, parents, a majority of them at least, said, "Let's complete most repairs at the same time." And then about a little over a third of them said, "Well, let's just prioritize the health and safety and leave the rest for a later date." Non-parents were split about fifty-fifty. In the December survey, we actually asked it with four different options, not three. One is make the improvements as many right now rather than put them off. Second, make critical health and safety, but know that we're gonna go back out again. The third was just make the critical health and safety investments and don't go out again, and finally, no investment. The answers really focused on those first two, and that's really good news. What it suggests is that there is certainly an openness, as you can tell from the percentages, of you doing an ambitious plan that makes as many investments as possible right now. But there's also a level of security for you if you decide, "Let's just make the highest priority investments." Maybe the top three or four or five from our list. And, but the residents will know we'll come back later for additional investment. It's really up to you as a board, based on your instincts and what you've learned from the assessments, to make this decision. But the good news here is that both of those first two options are really available as your strategy for a referendum. We've also asked about the tax impact. The question on the left is our, kind of our natural barometer, and that is that, you know, if, if you think about investments in schools, are you willing to vote for just about any property tax that improves our schools? You'd vote against just about any, or you would consider the vote, to vote yes, but it would depend on the plan. This is pretty similar to the answers that we saw in the last survey. A little bit of a difference in the parents being a little bit more likely to say they'd be against any. But in any district where the four percentage and the against percentage are relatively equal, I think is a good sign. But on the right side, we saw a very interesting result, particularly among non-parents. And that is, we saw an increase in the willingness to, to invest at least eleven dollars and maybe even more than sixteen dollars a month in order to pay for the proposed investments. For both parents and non-parents, the plurality answer was sixteen dollars per month or more. And that's pretty impressive if you think about that for the last several months. The district's been trying to communicate the importance of these investments, and your residents are reacting by saying, "Yeah, and we understand they're gonna cost a little bit." And, and, and we can support that as long as we see the value in the plan. We also asked a question about the, the fact that the state tax benefit for lower interest rates is, is going to be, is going to end in March of two thousand and twenty-four. And the basic question was, should the district go out before the end of March of two thousand and twenty-four in order to find out from residents whether they support a plan so we could take advantage of this? And eighty-eight percent of people said yes. So if, if you hear a message, if you decide to go out and you hear a message from people, "Wow, this seems rushed." This answer will likely help deal with all but the most tax-averse people in terms of the explanation for why you're going out. Finally, we talked about district decision-making. And you may remember that from the first presentation I did, I talked about that there were three categories of decision-making that we tried to test. And one of the things we have found out over time is that if somebody agrees with all three of these statements, they're more than ninety percent likely to vote for a referendum. What we've seen here is that pretty strong numbers on the idea that district decisions are, are made in the best interest of students and staff. And also relatively good numbers on whether the district does a good job of managing finances and tax dollars. On the issue, though, of whether the district's listening to opinions of people like me, we are seeing a majority of parents agree that that's true, and an increased number from last time. But only a plurality of non-parents agree. And you do a little bit of quick math there, you can see that nearly one in six non-parents don't have an opinion on that question. It's not necessarily rare that that happens. After all, they're a little bit less connected to the school district. In most districts I work in, the weakest response is in the second category, whether the district does a good job of managing finances and tax dollars. You've got pretty good numbers there, particularly from the non-parents. So overall, I think trust has strengthened since the previous survey, particularly in the financial management. And the numbers are certainly good enough that you should feel comfortable that if you bring a plan to your voters, they're gonna listen very carefully to the plan and make a good value judgment based on their own family's financial situation and their understanding of the needs of the school district. So, here's our takeaways. There's a growing awareness of the facility's challenges and the planning process. Parents and non-parents have similar priorities, and they're aligned with what you've said up until now has been the top priorities for the district. Residents are open to a tax increase to address facilities' needs, and we should add that they're realistic about what that tax increase may be. And they support the opportunity to vote before March of two thousand and twenty-four. Finally, in terms of decision-making, trust in the district is growing. And I think it's fair to say that your hard work has been paying off in terms of engaging your residents and building the trust levels that are gonna be necessary for them to really carefully consider a plan as you put it forward. So with that, I can pause and answer any questions that you have.
You know about how many residents we have in our district?
I think your number of voters is, is somewhere between twenty-five hundred and twenty-eight hundred, if I remember correctly.
And about what percentage of them are parents? Do we know that?
I do not have that data, no. In most school districts, it's, in rural school districts in the upper Midwest, it's somewhere between twenty-five and about twenty-eight or twenty-nine percent, but I don't have your data specifically, no.
Any other questions for Todd or on the survey results?
Any recommendations how to get more people involved in the district for to listen to us without them knocking on their doors?
Well, unfortunately, you just, you just provided the most important way. I, you know, it's, it's funny. You know, people do have kind of a sixth sense about what's going on in their school district often, but getting them to directly engage can be very difficult. I'll tell you, we spent some time this last fall working in a very small school district in northwest Minnesota called Goodridge. And they had five hundred forty-five voters in that district. And a group of about twenty, maybe twenty-five residents decided they wanted to take on the responsibility of contacting nearly every person who lived in that district and was a voting age. And, and I know how well they did because I took care of the database that was used to compute the results. One of the impacts of that reaching all of those people was that over seventy percent of people turned out for that election, which is a remarkable number to show up in an odd-numbered year. But the other result was it passed, and, and they ended up knowing exactly how it would pass. It all came down to personal contact, visiting them at their houses, seeing them at the grocery store, stopping by a coffee shop or restaurant. And there's nothing that replaces that, that kind of direct contact to get people to listen and then think seriously about the importance of the value.
Okay, well, thank you, Todd. Thanks for the great insight.
My pleasure.
Yeah. All right, let's, let's move on. Let's talk a little bit. I wanted to discuss like how we can take the information that you've gathered here in the last two to three months and how that can form, you know, maybe changing or, or what would that, what does that mean for the plan that you guys have been looking at and how you address your needs? So while, I'm just gonna go through a couple of things, and then we'll just open it up for discussion so you guys can, can talk about it. I don't know if there's gonna be any decisions necessarily, but I think to have a good conversation around it, being able to process it a little bit before you get to your January meeting, I think would be really good. So let's just take a look. This is back in November. We had a meeting, and these were all the priorities that you guys had narrowed down as top priorities. And if you remember, this was from quite a long list of needs on deferred maintenance. But this is the, the ones that you guys said, okay, these are our top needs. And you can see what the cost was, and you can see what that would mean for a hundred thousand dollar home if they, for a monthly tax impact and along with an egg, an average egg acre of land. Since November, we created the, the Community Action Committee, and that's where they met the three times, and Brian and Monica, along with District Administration, were part of that. So this is, what did we learn from that group? So after, at the third meeting, we brought this back at your last board meeting last Friday. But just to kind of consolidate it, the, the input that we had heard is to address the needs, not your wants. Cost of the plan is, is a concern. Based on the, the short survey that they did, you could see a majority of the residential would support eleven to twenty dollars per month tax increase. And the majority of ag land owners were looking at that one to two dollars per year per acre increase. I think it also was a consensus that to bring the plan to the voters, I think that was heard loud and clear. And just for the board and the district to be very transparent about the plan and, and what they're looking at doing. Looking at is a review of their top priorities when they had to decide which projects would they choose if they, if they were working on this. And you can see here on the right-hand side, you have your HVAC in the high school, the sewer pipe, the kitchen renovation, ADA-compliant restrooms, and then the window replacement. The other items that were on the list for the classroom improvements, no one of this group thought that that was of, of importance, and, and they did not give it any value at that with this group anyways. So as you guys look at deciding, okay, where do you go from here? I think it's really important, and we heard it again with Todd in, in the survey results, is we need to listen to the stakeholders. And, and so just making sure that, you know, we've asked for a lot of, of input. Now, as you start to decide what to do going forward, let's, I think it's important you listen to what they said. So the three bullet points that I, my takeaways was to address the needs only. I know that the, the classroom improvements are, are viewed as a need, but from what I've heard, as community members feel that could be more of a want and at this time and not a need. Also, how do we reduce the cost? And then also, what could we do to create maybe two questions to give voters an, an option on their cost threshold? Those were the things that I, if we were listening, I think those were loud and clear. So let's look at how can we reduce the cost? So since our last Community Action Meeting, there's a few things that I've been doing to try to understand, is there an option to reduce the cost without having major, decreasing the value? You know, I, I didn't hear from the board at all with our, one of our biggest projects on the HVAC side. I didn't hear anything that says, "Let's just do a, a cheaper system. We don't want to do that." I didn't hear that. So, so sticking with the actual same system that I would say is, is a twenty-to-thirty-year system at least. One thing we looked at is we get closer to actually knowing when you're gonna go to the voters. We can get, we can be a little bit more clear on what the project timeline would be. So I reviewed it with my team and, and looking at where we saw pricing come in. And when we look at that HVAC project, we are holding about a ten percent inflation rate because when we put the project budget together, we really didn't know when that would be out to the, to design and the construction bids coming in. Now that we have a better idea, if you're shooting for the March, there is an opportunity that I could reduce that from ten percent down to five. And it also, I was able to look to on where are we at on our HVAC equipment and, and inflation? Is, are we still seeing the crazy spikes like we were a year and a half ago? And, or a year ago even? And, and so we felt confident that we could reduce that down to five percent and still give you the same quality project and as we've been talking about all along. The other thing I looked at is the kitchen renovation. This was something that we had always held a price to. We're gonna do the complete renovation of the kitchen area with your sinks, serving area. But I took a little closer look at what we were doing in the actual cafeteria. And so rather than, you know, doing all the interior finishes redone and, and update any part of the cafeteria, I was able to, and this is just a suggestion, so you guys don't have to go with it, but it was just ways that you guys could look at reducing the cost, is just doing some, some minor painting and patching as needed in the cafeteria. So that's just your seating area. And still kind of tying it into the, the new serving kitchen area, but not having such a robust budget for that. So, so that would go down, and, you know, those are things too, in the future, that the district could always look at without jeopardizing the value of the kitchen upgrades. So that was something else I looked at. Another way we could reduce costs is to, to re, to remove improvements on the November list from what was wants versus needs, and then breaking it into two questions. So I laid out three options, and this is just to get, to get you guys kind of thinking and, and looking at the, what these different options would mean if we were to change anything. And so this is just for you guys to see, and then you can jump into conversation too and, and decide, you know, what is right for your, for the district if you do choose to go out for a referendum. Option number one, you can see here, I, there's three items that would be, we could break it up into two questions. The first question would include your HVAC, your windows, and the sewer piping, and that's about twelve and a half million dollars. Question two would then address your kitchen and that ADA bathrooms. Question two doesn't mean it's less important. It just gives an opportunity for voters to have a couple different price points that would align with where they are financially. Below that, you can see both on the, the residential and the ag, what that tax impact would be for those properties. And just keep in mind that the hundred thousand dollar home value is monthly versus the ag is yearly, and that's just kind of typically how you would budget if you were between the two different properties. Option number two, I moved things around a little bit and and ended up putting the, the kitchen renovation in that first question, because I know that's, that is very important to you. But then to try to create a different balance is the ADA bath- Um, but then to try to create a different balance is the ADA bathrooms and then the windows because that's what we heard in the second survey to the community isn't as important. Um, I granted, I do realize it plays well with our high school HVAC. Um, but that would be, you could see the, the price breakdown if you were to change up what projects were in each question and then what the tax impact would be for those. Though, that scenario for those questions. The third option is to say, okay, well, let's just do one question. We narrowed it down to these five items and this would be the cost and this would be the tax impact. If you noticed, I haven't included anything for classroom improvements. We can put that back in. Um, it didn't, this is just three options that I, I'm just showing you. Um, we can include it if, if the board feels really passionate about it. I would just caution you that from what I've been hearing from the, the feedback is even if you had it as a second question, I think people will get caught up on the idea of you of addressing wants versus needs and they may not listen to, to what that even means as far as it's a second question. It's a low tax impact. The idea of it even being part of the referendum in the plan could be detrimental when you're just out there and communicating and the residents feeling if they've been heard or not. So that, that would just be a caution based on information that we've been hearing. Okay, so I'll stop. You guys can talk and just kind of looking for, for thoughts, feedback. Just put out a couple of different scenarios um, that you guys could consider.
Lori, do we know, is the bond still right around that four percent? Or has that fluctuated since we started these discuss discussions?
I think, I don't think that's changed. Let me see what. I think it is around that four, if I remember um, from Anne presented to the, the community action committee um, last week. And I want to say, yeah, it was still in that four or five percent. So these, and just to clarify too, that the tax impact that you saw on the three options were if you went out to the open market, they did not take in consideration uh, if you qualified for the low interest bonds. So this would be a worst case scenario.
What was the max that we could get at the low interest bonds?
Fifteen. Which, which were, these all are under that.
So fifteen, yeah, fifteen million was the max.
But there's no guarantee we would be awarded a grant at all for, for, yeah, but.
I have a question. Where's that sewer running up in the elementary? Is it under the bathrooms or is it in the hallway?
The, where's, yeah, that's under the path. Under the hall and going east. It starts right there where we're down there.
Yes, yes.
In the hallway, it starts there and then drops if you go under that.
In the elementary school?
Yeah. Somewhere I thought on one of the maps that you had, it was in the hallway.
That is.
Going to the west.
That is, yes.
Depends on the ground.
Interplace. They didn't replace any of that when um, that whole thing was outside.
So there's water back um, on to that mops, right? Yes, about ten feet.
Lori, I wrote down a question while you, before you brought up, um, I think the words you said that the, were that the windows walk nicely with our HVAC project, uh, which I have always thought or I have come to believe it, it certainly makes sense to do those two together. Could you reflect on have maybe we not done a good job of communicating that complementary uh, nature of those two projects and could we uh, say, well, gosh, you know, if we do the HVAC but not the windows, we're, you know, our good, our nice air is just going to go out the window and our, what would be the impact on our heating costs and so on?
Yeah, so I like anytime, it feels like we communicated that message um, even to the community action committee. It, it seemed that that was the message we had talked about. Um, I, I think if the, if that is part of the first questioner is tied in with your HVAC, we should work on refining what that could, what that would mean even just on a, a budgetary cost, like an operational cost. So I don't have that number in front of me, what, what you would save, but I, I would work on putting together that message. So you know, it's, it's not only would the, would the heat go out the window, it's also what sizes our HVAC system? And what are we basing that off? If the windows are old, we have to use the, the less efficient window system. We know they need to be replaced anyways, um, because they're, because of the condition of the window. And we also then would be able to potentially reduce the size of the HVAC because we have a better insulated window throughout the high school.
This is what I've heard. There's people that counted and done all the math and windows. And it comes up to about fifty-two hundred dollars per window. It was just like that third night, people bid the math and the doors, interior doors at like forty-five hundred dollars a door. That's what I've been hearing.
I heard that number about the interior doors as well.
Yeah.
That seems alike a lot, but.
I think most people understand that it needs to go hand in hand. I don't, I don't know that I would be of grace to downsize our heating cooling system for what we have now, but I think that's what scared the people the most is the fifty-two hundred dollars per window. Because they were able to do some math. I mean, you can't really do the math on the HVAC system or kitchen remodel.
So they, Brian, they feel it's too expensive to do that?
Yes, yeah, yeah, exactly. Yeah.
So in that window number, what is all included with that, Lori? I mean, it's more just windows, obviously.
Well, it's, it's the windows. It is, well, obviously the installation of the windows. But then also, um, you're going to have, we have that inflation rate in there. We have contingency that's in there in case we come across things that are unforeseen. Um, you, you're going to have to have an architect design them and put them part of the plan. So there's fees associated with that. There's permits and construction oversight. So all of that is inclusive in that window replacement. And I know that, yeah, and, and what we ended up doing too is we, we looked at, you did get a budget or you did get a uh, bid on replacing the windows and I want to say it was about one point six million dollars back when you did the science floor. And we actually took those, you know, we didn't, we went with a less expensive type window in the budgetary cost that doesn't have, they're not operable and they're not, I think they had, that had some like fancy grids and, and different things on the outside. And so just to try to get it into more of a manageable cost so that it could be feasible to get done, we took some of that, we took those items out.
Fluff away.
What's that?
Took away the fluff.
The fluff, yeah, yep.
Oh, there's, there's really no, is there, is there any way around the these, the, the fees and the architectural design? It has to all be engineered by engineers and architects and there's fees associated with that, right? There's no way around that for us, is there?
No, no, this is with, with North Dakota Century Code um, and public dollars. Projects have to be of this magnitude for school districts have to be engineered and publicly bid. So you can't just go hire someone um, to, to do the, these improvements. And that's the, you know, that's looking out for the, the district too, so that you can get the, you know, the district and the taxpayers so that you, you do get the best value and there is some safety in what is being installed in these buildings. Because as we can see, I mean, this is just a hundred year old building. You know, you got to make sure that we're not putting residential type windows or something that, that doesn't hold up to the, the standards of your, your type of building. So there, it is a good thing to have too.
But if you did a project like this and spent under a hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year, then you can take off about twenty percent of the fees, right?
Brian, you absolutely could. Let's say you do one under a hundred and fifty, but now you spread it out over um, you, over eight years, right? So you can do that um, save some money and then but yet next year the inflation, you know, you still, you do have inflation, you have a chance of getting potentially different windows, different contractors. Um, but it is for sure an option.
Where do you save the, so you're, you're referring to the windows instead of doing them all at once, doing them a hundred and fifty thousand dollars at a time over seven or eight years? Where, where do you save the twenty percent?
Then you're going to have to architecture engineers or general contractors.
But when you look at span of eight years, I don't know that you're going to save twenty percent, but. Well, yes, as far as how well that. Last HVAC, right?
Can we, your Q and A, is that something that we can just do a better job of explaining that there's all those added costs? You know, as far as, you know, because you put out your questions and just say, you know, talk about the windows a little more in depth and just say, you know, there's all these added fees. So it's not just the cost of the window, it's the construction. You know, it's the engineering, it's all of that stuff. So people that will be understanding of that, they should already, but.
And emphasize that it, it, it's, it's hard to to talk about that being, well, we need to, we need to pay all these fees because it's your tax dollars. Because, well, we need to assure quality of the project, but that means we're going to pay all these fees to assure that we have uh, we've spent your tax dollars as well.
And to say that it's, I mean, it's a true, that, you know, I think, then it's not just us.
But, but it needs to be phrased in a way that share, and emphasizes the benefit to the taxpayer by ensuring that we're getting quality product and workmanship.
Well, I think a lot of them are misconception of that that's a bid. That that's the actual amount, yeah. Um, so I just don't know if that is, and people aren't quite getting that. You know, they think that's the bid on the window. So that's the they calculate however many dollars for one time.
What I think is interesting, what she just said, the bid, the true bid was one point six million dollars.
Right, right.
And they've come down to nine hundred and sixty dollars.
With everything.
Yeah.
And I think that's out there. So we are, we are, we are. We've already seen that we've brought it down from what might have been a fine product, but it had more. More cost than. Monica brought up the perception that this is a bid. Another question I jotted down was um, or it's more of a statement than a question, but we're reflecting, it, it, do these estimates reflect the challenge of us being in a relatively remote district, not in Fargo, um, and the likelihood or possibility at least that we would have fewer bidders um, and higher bids because we are remote from the bigger cities?
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. And that was something that we were, I was reviewing just once again, just to double check is with our implementation, you know, geographically, you are just going to pay more just because of where you're located and which cut, where we can pull contractors out of, you're going to pay more. Um, similar to like northern, up in Goodridge that Todd was referring to. You know, they're going to pay more because they're just more remote and it's hard to get contractors to travel uh, that far distance. And if they do, that they'll get reimbursed, you know, they'll have to include that cost of travel into their, their bid. I mean, the good news is, is they usually then stay in your community and then probably, you know, eat at your restaurants and, and stay at your hotels. That's a hard number to quantify. Um, but it's the reality for these contractors that have a tight, busy summer schedule. So you'll bring other money, other, uh, generate other revenue for the community during the construction project.
Lori, what is your track record, yours personally or your firm's track record, track record with regard to having, you know, taking this project from the stage we're at right now in these estimates and then going to the bidding phase after, obviously after design and engineering. What's your track record for not getting bad surprises?
Well, I, I would say, I, I would say we're very high. Uh, we have a very, very good track record. Um, on bid day of not having surprises. Okay, now that, that doesn't mean um, throughout the design and the engineers are putting things together, we'll continually update budgets because we'll continually want to see where we're at. Um, you know, that, the, actually, it's a tough question with the, the twenty-one, twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two. Uh, inflation rates was out the window, right? Um, but that didn't change the fact that we continually looked at that. So we had a game plan on bid day of, of multiple scenarios to make sure that you get, that you, district still had a, an awardable project. Um, so that, in that regards, I'd say we have an excellent track record to assure that you can have a project moving forward as you promised your voters.
Have you any experience of or could you, do you have any examples of projects in communities, districts somewhat similar to, similar to ours that came in? Oh boy, it surprised you. It came in so much lower.
Well, this is back in two thousand seventeen, so it's not quite as fair, but you know, like, you know, Wadena Deer Creek, it's a small community. They have two, they do have two buildings. They're just right across the street, but from each other. Um, you know, and they, they had, oh gosh, was it maybe a, an eight or nine million dollar project? And they came in a million dollars under budget. Um, that was very significant and they were able to do a lot more with, with their dollars. Um, the other scenario too is, is we see a lot of times when it comes to bonding for your, for these projects. Uh, again, they're trying to find the, the market. They're trying to guess where the market's going to be when you do bond. So there usually is some savings on that interest rate, uh, because they're usually being conservative. So we've seen that as an option too, to be able to um, save some dollars on, on how much it costs to bond.
Lori, can you explain a little bit more what you um, took off of the kitchen renovation? That's down like a million dollars.
So if you remember back in, in November, October, November, I had already reduced the size a little bit of, of the kitchen renovation as far as extending all the way north into that storage area and really focused in on the cafeteria or taking a portion of the cafeteria for a serving and the existing kitchen, kitchen. So that brought it from two point seven this fall to two point one million dollars. And what I did from our meeting in November till today is the cafeteria was the area in blue. See if I have a good. I don't know if I have a good picture of this. Um, so the cafeteria was in blue and that would be on the west side of your building. Um, or the west side of the kitchen area. Instead of including, I think we're at a hundred dollars a square foot, we went down to, or a hundred and fifty dollars a square foot to change the interior finishes, have it a cohesive look with your new kitchen area, just to, to. change the interior finishes, have it a cohesive look with your new kitchen area, just to, to um, replace all those finishes. Now we're at fifty dollars a square foot and we ended up, um, you can, we have money in there, so when it comes to, if we need to paint, if we need to do some floor repairs, we can still do that, but it's not gonna have a brand new look to it, we're not gonna replace all the flooring, we're just gonna patch as needed.
Does that include, what, sorry? Does that include the new cooler and a walk-in freezer as well, or was it just the?
It includes the, it includes the cooler and freezer too, we have, uh, an equipment allowance in that budget.
So I have a question for you, Lori, so I, I think it was kind of alluded to at that community meeting that if you guys come in with a big project, ICS makes more money on that, so that you possibly would be going for the Cadillac or whatever, so you can make more money. Maybe can you explain about how you're funding or how you guys, the money you make on, on the next phase and the next phase, if there would be another one?
Yeah, um, so for ICS, we don't, we don't sell anything, right, Anna, so we're not, I, I'm not trying to sell you the best system so I can make more money. Um, what we do is, we, we provide construction management, so no matter if it's a twelve million dollar project or a sixteen million dollar project or twenty million dollar, you know, we're looking at, um, we're looking at the scope of work, so if we're gonna renovate all the HVAC in three stories versus one system versus the other, um, the cost isn't as, as much of an effect as the scope of work, so we will have to be on site from May to, to August, let's say. We're gonna have to help, um, review plans, we're gonna be updating budgets, we're gonna manage the time schedule, all that really is, it, it doesn't change based on the type of HVAC system. It really is just the time that we'll be on site that affects what our, our budget is, or what our fee would be. So we don't sell anything, we don't design anything, I don't get any more if, if you design a more expensive system. Um, so there, it really is, comes down to, we're just trying to provide you with a recommendation of what we've seen successful in school buildings of your type, I mean, we, you want air conditioning, you want an efficient system, that's where a recommendation comes from. And it's not the Cadillac, Anna.
Is there a certain amount of quotes that we could expect or is required, like from the state?
No, Brian, there's not a requirement, um, of how many bidders we get. But it is, one of the values we bring is, we'll break this project down into several different scopes, so you'll have mechanical, electrical, um, we, you know, we might do a general, we might do painting separate, so we can get maybe a local contractor, flooring separate, and we will be calling and reaching out to several contractors that we know personally and that are local, that you guys know, and what we're trying to do, I just had a bid come in um, in Henning this fall and, you know, like mechanically, we had six bidders on that, so that's a very good idea of um, what the market bears at that time for that scope of work. Every, every bid package, I think we had eight of them, every bid package for that project had four to, to six bidders on their scope of work.
So just to follow up with what Anna asked you, if ICS was the construction manager for this project, you're not compensated based on a percentage of the project? It's more of an hourly, you, you said scope of project and maybe hourly is maybe too simplistic, but.
I guess it, it, it's more on the time, the, the, um, project timeline is what the construction manager is gonna base their, their fee off of, because how long how many weeks do we need to be mobilized at the district to oversee this project? That's gonna be what it's based on. Versus, um, you know, I guess, I guess maybe like an architect on average would probably say six to eight percent. They, they would more than likely lock in a, a fee and not do it based on on bid results, but, you know, so they, they look at the pro, the, the cost of the project, I mean, that kind of identifies how much work is needed. Versus a construction manager would look at the timeline.
But we decided to do all these projects, the HVAC bathroom, windows, kitchen, and sewer. You think that's realistic, we have that done in three months and the plus back install?
Well, it's a lot of work, Brian, I, it really is, um. You know, there, there's some, with the HVAC, we don't have a lot of options as far as is not doing it over the summer, what's that?
My only concern would be, you know, give, we're in the middle of August and we still got a lot left, what's our quality of workmanship can be at the end of August?
There could be a potential.
Realistic, I guess.
Yeah. And I'm gonna rely too on my project manager when it comes to what work and, and, you know, their experience, um, with what work are we gonna be able to, do we break up our kitchen renovation and do that a separate year potentially? Um, because the contractor, the contractors, it'll be more attractive to the contractors, that's something that we look at too is, um, we wanna make sure this is an attractive project, so we get a lot of bids. And, and we have to then, and a lot of times it ends up us calling contractors. And, and we're gonna, we're gonna poke at them, we're gonna, we're gonna try to understand like what, what is their um, current workload, what do they feel, how many guys could they dedicate to this project? Um, over one summer and get a feel of, does it make sense to maybe break it up into two summers just because of what we heard? Or should we try to get it done in one?
Like, is there a timeline, like, ah, like if this, if this referendum passes, is there a timeline, um, in which these projects have to be completed?
Now that they have to, no, they, we don't have anything that we're, that's set in stone that they have to be completed in a certain time. Um, once the construction manager is on, uh, in contract, then I would, then and funding is approved, um, then we would go ahead and develop that specific timeline. Uh, but you could, if it takes two different summers to can, complete the work or two years, uh, there's nothing for code that makes you, that requires you to do it sooner.
What is your experience with, um, splitting the, the, putting a second question on the ballot with regard to how, how often does Q two get approved? Is there any pattern?
Uh, in seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, yep, they passed question one and two. Um, it was very successful having a second question and it still passed. Um, uh, uh, the last two years, um, I would say more like fifty fifty. You know, it, it really, if, if that second question would pass. I mean, you could do something a little bit more risky and not, not make them contingent on each other. And what I mean by that is if you did, for example, um, two projects that are, are completely independent of each other, let's say the two district-wide projects, and put that in a question, I mean, technically you could have that pass and not the first one, um, if you so choose. I don't really recommend that, I usually would have, you know, they have to support question one to, to be able to have question two pass. And.
Go ahead, finish it.
Yeah, and there is some strategy, if you look at it, is you can see now that the community values the, the kitchen renovations. There's a little strategy, if you put that into a second question, for them to then support both of them. You know, kinda having something in each one of the questions that is a priority to the majority of the taxpayers.
Something that's just occurred to me here that I wanna bring to your attention, when, when I look at these projects you have listed, I think they're all district-wide projects, because the juniors, all the same kids go from the elementary building to the same high school, they're not going to, you know, they're not coming from different elementary schools into a single middle school or high school. Um, our elementary kids go over to our library, to our gym daily, um, to me, it's all district-wide, and I don't know if that I, I, I realize that, you know, that, that's just how you've labeled it, but maybe, maybe that messaging would be better, that these are just improvements for our school, because I consider it one school. I don't know if it would make any difference, but it just occurred to me as I sat here and looked at district-wide versus high school, well, we all, all the kids use the same buildings.
Good point.
If we had all these questions, like option three, on the question one, I know you said if we put like the lockers, the furniture and that other stuff on the question two, you kinda opposed to that, but if we had it as a question number two, would that give some of them people like maybe they would feel good about really voting no against that stuff? Do you think that would be a benefit or not?
There is a strat, there is a strategy towards that, yeah, there is a strategy.
I don't, I don't know, I'm just asking.
Have you ever seen, um, a district that has carved out, let's say, the classrooms and interior doors, in our case, something like that, and said, okay, we're gonna, we're gonna go out and fundraise for that, for example, a few years ago, um, a local bank, uh, or I guess more of a regional bank with local roots, gave us a nice fifty thousand dollar donation to improve our track. Well, if we had ten or twelve of those companies and we said, okay, you know, we need seven hundred and fifty, let's, let's make it easy, let's say we had fifteen of those companies and we needed seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars to do those interior classroom upgrades. You could do it all at the same time, if we had budgets of, you know, fifty thousand dollars from this many. Seen anybody do that?
Absolutely, yeah, yeah, and, you know, I'm not gonna kid you, a, a million dollars or seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars to raise is, is tough. That, that's a, that's a pretty big ask, um, but if you look at some of those projects on, like a smaller scale, there, it's there is definitely an option to get a portion of that. And, you know, that, that could be a good strategy on, on, if, if you have, I wouldn't recommend Anna doing it, but if there is a group or someone who's willing to lead that effort, um, we've seen districts actually raise quite a bit of money and use that.
Non-school board members?
Yeah, usually I don't see school board members either doing it, usually it's. Sometimes it is, do you have a local business or some, someone in the community? That's we, or, you know, even a teacher or adminis, you know, um, teachers can lead that effort, but usually it'd be someone in the community, I see, as the lead, lots of people can support them.
Lori, do you feel strongly with one of these options that we would be the most successful with?
Well.
Are you allowed to tell us that?
I could, yeah, I mean, I, yeah, I just, um, I guess if it were me, I would have, I would do option number one, that, that would be me. I think.
I just feel like it's so risky to separate that window from the HVAC.
That's what I was saying, or, or could we, can you add windows in with one of the others that they're more interested in to try and push it through that way?
Cause I think one, number one does have the windows in that.
Yeah, I like how it's sandwiched in between the, the sewer and the HVAC, which.
Right, but if you just added the cost and then listed it up with that, like improvements and windows instead of separating it out, so that it's not so obvious to people that we have to pay nine hundred and sixteen thousand for windows?
Thought we were going for transparency.
Yes.
We, we usually don't. Our key messaging wouldn't have these budgets broken down like this, once you land on question dollar amounts, that would be the number that you would be, would be communicating, if it's twelve point six million, right? That, that's the number you're talking about, and then these are the things we're gonna get for it. Which, you know, then, then maybe you do all the, everything in one.
And then, Lori, you had said like that, the single stall restroom, like that budget was tied in with the classroom renovation, is that budget going to change if we take that classroom renovation out of there?
It could vary a little bit, Monica, yep, um, for sure need to have the HVAC done because then everything's torn down and, and above ceilings is completely redone, um. Yeah, I, you're, that's a good point, is I, should we look at that budget, because it was in con- conjunction with those classrooms? So it might bump up a little bit.
So what you're saying is, like, a line one would say, high school HVAC indoor air quality improvements slash windows, and that's what?
The total, the total number.
Yes, not to not list it at all, just to.
Okay, so then when, when these people were doing the math and dividing nine hundred and sixteen thousand dollars by how many windows? Well, when I did the math, it was like a hundred and seventy six.
And that was all of the, the metal ones being.
Nine sixteen thousand divided by fifty two hundred dollars? So they were, they, they were using a hundred and seventy six windows? A hundred and ninety windows? That's forty eight hundred and fifty. But what, do we have that many windows? And so then the other question is, when we look from the outside, we have lots of windows, but when then we go in the inside of the rooms, there aren't that many windows. So I don't know, how are they coming up with the number of windows to divide the number by to get the cost per window?
And what we ended up doing is going by square footage of the window fronts. So I don't necessarily have the number count, we, we went with area.
But to open up the windows behind the tin, that's just she dropped.
Some of them, some are sheeted up, um, I'm, I'm pretty sure most of them are, because that might be like where there's cabinetry, you know, that storage. Might be a wall that's there.
My concern about doing like the high school window replacement, like East Mill eight hundred and fifty, we can't even get somebody to come and fix our east. We can't even get a bid on, yeah, uh, we can't, it's not a point, eh, we're. Not only that, in three years, you're probably not gonna get the same windows, you know, so then everything's gonna look piecey. I think we learned our lesson. Yes. Are we getting to the end of our questions, Brian?
I think so. Can we go back to option number one, please?
Separating out the kitchen scares me as the monetary people because if it doesn't pass for some reason or another, okay, today I get a video from Jara. We've got water running in that small, because the door keeps popping open. It's because for some reason we've got like water just running in there and her food is frozen to the ground. So, you know, I mean, that's the the freezer and my fear is, okay, if that goes down. Again, I mean, I know I said that you guys are tired of me, there's not enough savings or there's not enough stuff there to say we fixed that and.
So one point seven million, just round it up to two million dollars for the kitchen. We don't, I mean, we just, we don't even have that to, to raise. Even if we, twelve millstones doesn't even give us a miscellaneous for twelve, two million dollars. We couldn't get a new kitchen. We'd have to buy, can we even buy a reefer? I don't know how much. I don't know how much they are.
I just separating out scares me too because what if they go on to, right?
The next day your kitchen staff would probably not say.
Do most referendums have two options?
A lot of them nowadays, yes. A lot of times they do. Um, one of the things I I like about the clear trans- uh, communication about it is for two dollars and sixty five cents a month, we can also do the kitchen renovation.
Well, and I think that survey showed too that from the last survey to this one, like people are actually getting it. They understand that we need that kitchen redone. Whereas before I would have been more nervous. I think now that people have been in there and seen it, I think they understand a lot.
But my fear is, is of those people that, that's mostly parents that took the quiz. So the parents will probably be here at parent night, they've been in the kitchen. And according to Todd, twenty five percent of the population are parents. So you've got seventy five percent that are gonna go us the same pitch as they are and. And because people didn't come into the tour unless they were here for parent teacher talking. I agree, it's moved up, but it was skewed.
Tuesday, Tuesday afternoon.
I like option three. I think, I, I just feel that we've educated enough people or just about as many as we possibly can and people are behind us that their needs at the school and we're not throwing in anything that's wants.
Where did the, do you have that, um, that slide Laurie that said that the feedback from that community? Meeting was that they wanted two questions up there. Where did that come up that I know I missed the end of that one session? So I'm just wondering where that came from.
Well, that, I, I did, I mentioned it, um, specifically Kyle thought that was a great idea, um.
So he could vote for one and not the other.
Take it for what it's worth, uh, but he kind of lit up and was like, yeah, that's a great idea. You know, and, and that's where as a board and, and living in the community, you'll just have to be able to how much weight does that have, right? How does that feel? If we get someone like Kyle to be be behind the plan, how does that feel? You know, does that carry a lot of weight or is it, you know, that's one person and and the rest will understand one, one question versus two. So that's where that came from, Monica. Um, and it was in that later conversation as we continue to talk after the six thirty timeframe. Um, and just something, I don't, I don't know if the board's gonna make, I don't think you're making a decision today necessarily. Um, but just to, I would have you just kind of look at where where we're at on the tax impact and how that aligns with kind of what we heard um, from the surveys. That would just be something to kind of consider too as you're deciding.
Laurie, can you go back to option three, please?
Absolutely.
We're only talking like three dollars a month for taxes more by doing option three compared to one or two, alright?
The, the three dollars doesn't concern me as much as the dollars per acre. That's the one that, right, I'm in a very concerned. There's a lot of people that have a lot of acres and it's a lot of money. It is. You know, and on this one, even if you took off, you know, I look at that and okay, they're really, the only want would be bathrooms in my opinion, because we have a bathroom, right? But it's a hundred and thirty six thousand dollars. That's what I was thinking is how, what can we take out that really is kind of a want and that's such a tiny, tiny fraction.
Unless you put the bathroom in there is the second question.
Yeah, that's what I mean. That's what I was gonna say. Well, but what, what's the point of that? So what, what we've really removed is the classroom improvements. Interior doors. No, they wouldn't use, that's why I think. Vintage. Excuse me?
I am gonna eat those words for the rest of my life. In the future, trust me. I will choose my words wiser.
Okay, I think we should wrap up these questions and answers unless there's anything else that's. Okay. Um, so let's move on in your presentation, Laurie.
Okay, so just one last thing, just wanted to, to run by is the North Dakota Sentry Code does require you as a district to publicly advertise for construction managers. Um, so this is something now that you have, uh, if we're looking towards that March, I think this would be a good time to do this and, and just make sure you're following, um, following the, the guide or the requirements of Sentry Code. So what that means is you do have to publicly, um, advertise in your local paper for twenty one days. There, there needs to be a selection committee that reviews the RF, RFQs request for qualifications. And then they conduct interviews with the top candidates. Um, so this would just be what I'm proposing is, is laying this out. We can put the RFQ together for you and, and help and, you know, make sure and the advertisement forbid, so we can, we can put all that together, um. With the timing of it, I suggest that we get that published next week already. Looking at having proposals do that mid-January interviews at the end of January and then at your February board meeting, you can, um, award to the to the most qualified candidate. And this, that would then, would that, the construction manager in place so that upon a successful referendum, um, they can help you facilitate. We'd have to do the same thing for the architect and engineer and they can help facilitate that process. And you can just see here what the selection committee members would be my recommendation on who's on that, that committee. And if, if you guys are good with that, I can work with Anna to get the, the advertisement out in the RFQ. If you have questions or wanna, um, or wanna change anything, just let me know.
Is this gonna cause confusion if people see this in the newspaper that, oh, we've already moved forward or?
Uh, I don't think so, Monica. I think it's, it's, um, it's common to, once you get close to, to having a plan and sometimes they even bring them on even sooner while you're still doing your planning process. So that is, um, it's common that you do have it out there.
I, I, I don't disagree with you. I, but I had the same concern as Monica and I wonder if a a parallel, um, what are the, they're not FAQs, they're FWA, would, would address that and say if you, you know, you, you may have seen in the paper that we're advertising for a construction manager. Once again, that doesn't mean that we've made a decision. This is just part of the process and there's really, no, there's no cost to this other than the advertising, right?
Correct. Yep. I mean, the other, the other option would be is if you wanted to push it to the, the RFP goes out on the twelve. In alignment with a potential decision by the board. That would be in.
I guess I'm not concerned about the timeline so much as just, you know, being open with people and anticipating that confusion or whatever and just staying ahead of it.
Yeah, I think the FAQ or FQA is.
Why, why do you suggest the school board president and vice president? Any reason why a, a different board member couldn't be appropriate on that selection committee?
Nope, any, any of the board members could be. Um, I just was looking at two and, and just put the president and vice president. So you can as a board decide who you'd want to have on there.
And does that need to be decided so, um, that we can decide that at our next board meeting? We don't need to decide that today, right?
Correct. So that could be on the, um, just as like on the nineteenth of January. So in preparation for the nineteenth, so when the, when they come in, you'd have a committee that would review the responses. So on the twelfth, you absolutely can make that decision.
That's our board meeting, right?
Yes, it wouldn't matter. I mean, if that RP, well, we wouldn't get it out, would we, right? Because the newspaper wouldn't get it out next week if it happened in the following week.
It has to be Friday by noon for the next Thursday, but are we gonna advertise at the Oaks time? Well, we have to.
Yeah, for twenty one days.
I think that equals three publications. So if that goes out, so you're saying that it would not go out until next Friday?
Where the fourth then. There's, Thursday, the fourth.
Oh, fourth, Thursday, the fourth, yeah. Okay, we'd have to have it in by the twenty ninth at noon to get in by February fourth's paper.
January fourth. So then it would be published the fourth, the eleventh, the eighteenth and our. And that's, that's, that's fine, right? Oh, yeah, you might need to, you, we were saying proposals were due the nineteenth. If your third publication date is January eighteenth is the nineteenth, an appropriate proposal deadline.
Uh, we probably should push it then to the twenty fourth or twenty fifth. And still could have interviews that following week. That's not a big deal. So we'd probably then just push it to having it do on the twenty fifth. Any other questions or thoughts on that?
How many potential construction manager companies do you think we might have?
Well, that's a good question. I don't know. Um. Sometimes you could get, you could get three or four. Um, trying to think of who's out of, maybe the Fargo area, there might be one or two out of the Fargo area. Maybe get someone out of the metro. I, I don't anticipate that, the Minneapolis area. So maybe you would have five or three to four or three to six, I would think maybe would respond to it.
Alright, and then you have your timeline, um, and the next steps that, that was my next question. And just to be clear, the, the work is not done. I mean, what? If and when this board decides to go forward with a referendum, there's still work to do. There's still communication to be had. The, the work really is just starting. Feels like we've done a lot already, but the work is just starting. Brian's gone door to door.
Actually, I think Todd said he would, I was telling Brian that Todd will guide us what's legal, not legal, you know, so that we make sure that we're careful with what we do. So, to think of this.
Yeah, and, because you guys will, go ahead, Brian.
Why don't you call the question, I think? With those, those legal things would, would come once they would call the question is what I'm assuming, right? That's sixty days.
Yeah, so then we could have Todd, uh, talk about, um, the roles and responsibilities because you will as a board wear two different hats. Um, so he can walk you through that just so you're following what, like Anna said, what's legal, what isn't legal in a referendum communication. And so that'll happen between your January twelfth and I, I had just, your March, March twelfth. Um, just because that was sixty days and it is a Tuesday, that doesn't have to be, there's nothing set in stone on that, but that's what you could anticipate if you, if you do make a decision on the twelfth, the January.
Uh, so March, March twelfth is a vote. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen brings it to uh, March twenty fifth, it would have to be ratified.
So it's support like that board would canvass the vote.
Canvas the vote, yes. And that would have to be, I'm guessing, would have to be into the state DPI by Thursday at midnight. Because Friday is Good Friday. And April first is already late. So it would have, you would have Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday at midnight.
So, so what is the, what's the process? Is it a big package that has to be sent or is it just, no, we pass the vote?
I, I think it's a little more than that, but it's description of kind of what's going on and.
But truly, we, we would be, we would know.
We would know on the twelfth. We would know with the twelfth, yes.
Unless it was that close and there were absentee though. Day, Shannon and I were looking at. What is the fourteenth parent teacher conferences?
Oh, yes.
So Shannon and I were talking that if the vote was on the day of parent teacher conferences, that would bring a lot of parents in.
And the vote takes place here, the election.
Well, that would be.
Well, you're just trying to be strategic on how we can get.
To the twenty seventh and it would be due the next day. I mean, at that point, it, I mean, but either way.
And all, yes, and all likely, but you would.
Even if it was tied or it was really close, you'd still have ready to go so that you could hit submit on as soon as those canvassed. You're just seeing that would be bring a lot of people in.
And so on, on January twelfth, if, if we, which I think we're, we're saying, we're going, the board is going to vote on January twelfth at our board meeting or approve a resolution calling for an election, which would include the, the election date, correct?
If we did it January twelfth, the earliest, well, it's fifty, once you declare the vote or declare the referendum, you have, you can't vote for fifty five days. or declare the referendum, you have, you can't vote for 55 days. So March 12th is 60 days, which is what our PFM had asked for is 60 days. So there's. So the 14th gives her 62 days. So I mean, that's, it's just right in there.
I'm not saying that we have to do it on that date. We were just looking at the calendar lately, so there's some options. Strategically good move or strategically, you know.
What are your thoughts on that, Lori?
Well, I, I just, one thing that would make me, um, just making sure that the teachers get to vote. And I know parent conference days are really busy. Um, so I, I would say I just want to be careful that we don't put it on a time where they can't get to the polls. I'm gonna verify with Todd, our, he is right now, um, just confirming like early voting and location of voting. I don't know, Shannon, if you, if you have it in that Sentry Code is can you vote? Can you pick your polling place or do you have to? Does it have to be at a designated?
That day, we have to declare, uh, time, place, and we have to hire inspections, a specter and two judges and two clerks.
So we can hold it out the school then?
I'll spend here. We would have it, if not the central office, then little gym lobby, right?
Oh, yeah.
But we would specify that.
And I, I had talked, we thought we could have the garage door shut and two places and they could be in here or I never would buy it, gym lobby. But we were trying to get the gym lobby.
Oh, yeah. So, yeah. But so here that here it could buzz in on this, but.
So it, it might align well then with this, with the, um, parent conferences to get our parents to make sure they vote. That is very strategic. It's just a lot of work on one night. I just want to make sure we're not over committing.
We would start election about 11.
We have to have an open at 11.
We can start it earlier.
Yes, we can.
But it has to be by 11. Your election board is willing, which they, we need. So you're thinking if it went like 11:07, because we're planning on having that showcase in the gym, not conferences in the classrooms, but the showcase, so then that would be over about we're thinking 6 or 6:30. We weren't gonna go the poll in fair time, so the kids would have to be there. Then there would be time after the showcase got done, they could kind of vote.
And then if it was open during the day, the teachers would come on their.
Yes, so we would, we would be very strategic on what we would do there to.
And they, they can also vote, get a ballot.
Correct.
Okay.
All right, what else?
That's all I had. It's.
Lots to dream, dream about, but till our next meeting.
Okay, so before the next meeting, they're just gonna have to mull it over and then they're gonna have to make a decision on the 12th that we're gonna move forward to vote in March, correct?
Right.
Or, I mean, they, they don't have to choose one, two or three, right?
Yeah, there's any number of other options that we could ask you to do, but I think we had that conversation and was like, well, what? Should we just, are about those bathrooms for a question too? That doesn't seem like much.
Well, and maybe between now and in the 12th, I mean, if there's thoughts or opinions, maybe you could get it back to Anna. Just to kind of feel where the board members are at if there is.
Put an option four, include, okay, the rewrite of the HVAC, the windows. Um, and, uh, oh, what would the other, the air quality? The sewer. The kitchen. As question one, and then question two be the remodeling of the classrooms with the bathrooms. Could that be question two?
You guys, you guys can do any question you want. Yes, yes. Anything you guys want to put on there, you can. I would just encourage you to, to just make sure that we're listening to what the community said.
That's, that's my fear is like the whole time we've been pushing that we want your feedback, we want your feedback. Well, they gave it to us and nobody thinks that that's important. I shouldn't know. The majority do not think that's important. So I think if we turn around and put that on the ballot, it's gonna show that we're, I think that trust level is gonna go down that we have just built up and I don't want that to happen.
I agree.
And it makes you wonder about the windows, because they don't see that that's important if we throw that in there.
Well, I think they do, but I don't think they see what the benefit is.
And I, and I don't think that that understanding is there that that is not a bit on the, that is not a per window cost on there.
Could be more.
Well, it could, but I think that they need to understand that it's all those fees and everything associated with inflation, everything.
It's not just you going out to Merz Lumber.
Not measuring up.
I know that.
Can we explain that to the questions? Like, what, what these numbers really are?
I'm gonna tell you, I agree with what you said about, um, listening to the saying, we, we, we listened and we set the rest of that stuff aside. And here's what I wrote down about that. We would hear five to 10 years later, well, why didn't they do the classrooms back when they did all this other stuff? But I agree with you 100%. I, I guess that, that kind of work can be done in the future. And it will probably have to be, it will be, but I, I'm sure those, there will be those naysayers.
Because it doesn't make sense. I'll tell you about that. Nothing, nothing we're gonna do, we're, we're gonna do here is gonna make everybody happy, so.
You just gotta get 60% of them.
Okay, hard work, guys. Really hard work.
Yeah.
Thank you, Lauren.
Thank you, guys. You did, you're doing a great job. So just, I, I mean, it's not an easy decision and I think your recent communication, um, and efforts to get community involved has definitely the community realizes this is hard. So I, I think you guys have done a great job on, on doing the right path with trying to get them engaged and showing what how important it is to do this. So you guys keep doing what you're doing.
Well, you keep helping us keep the momentum flowing and the messaging right.
It's. I'm sorry.
It's Anna's grandson is in here. Can you hear him yawning?
All right, anything else?
Well, we did hear from the groups that they were very pleased with the education that we have been giving us, giving everybody. And so, you know, people are really satisfied with that.
So we'd like to have our facility in, in condition to continue to do that. And I realize we can still do it without a perfect building, but we have to have heat, for sure.
Well, I think about of the 13 that were in that meeting, 11 said that they would have voted, they would vote yes. And, and there were, there is.
Right, people that I was nervous about.
Right, yeah. So 11 out of 13 is better than 60% of that's just.
All right, thank you, Lori. Um, you have a merry, merry Christmas.
Same to you guys. Merry Christmas.
Thank you.
Happy holidays.
You've, you've watched a lot of our board meetings, right? And you know that this board is all focused on student outcomes, student outcome goals.
Yeah.
I just want you to know that for the first time since I've been a school board member, we've achieved one.
What, what is that?
We have not won the cowbell game against Ellandale since December 16, 20 even. We lasted a year later.
Congratulations. That's, that's exciting.
I have my cowbell shirt on.
It's gonna be a really good Christmas.
I, yes, it's a great start.
Yep. All right, with that, as long as we just had to get one thing in on student outcome goals. Lori and. So with that, I'll declare this meeting adjourned at 3:40 PM.